Now we're ready? All right. I'll be quiet over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Palfini. Hang on. Where'd you go, Ken?
Just happened. Here.
Councilmember Susan Tabalero. Here. Mayor Kim Green.
Here. Okay, just a little note before non-agenda. In our regular business section, H will be moved up to the first spot, so we will be talking about that, this, before we go on to the A through G. Okay. So, non-agenda, public comment.
And 8H is the item related to the reorganization of the school district.
Yes, yes. Okay. Silence your cell phones. That's okay. Okay, this is the, this is the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And, uh, no, public comment can be made, but we will not be able to just have a discussion on any of the topics brought during public comment. So is there anyone here who wants to talk about anything that is not already on the agenda? Backerphone. It's probably not on, is it?
Is it?
There you go, there you go.
Good evening, council. My name is Catherine Downer, and I live at 1488 Union Street in Weed and Angel Valley. Over the last weekend, I had an incident where somebody came flying off of the road that they were coming up on Arba, and instead of making the 90-degree turn into Ieka, they landed in my property and caused severe damage. I would like the council to consider putting up a guardrail. This is not the first time, second time, but it's the third time that has somebody in the last 10 years has come off of that place, and I'm afraid of that sometime I'm going to be out there, I could end up getting hurt. It's seriously a little bit of an issue.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, that's right, Jeremy. Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? No. Okay. Councilmember announcements. Ken, you want to go first?
Uh, yeah, I'll go first. I am, I'm not going to report anything today. I'm a little bit out of sorts, so I will just stick with the agenda.
Thank you. Sue's writing. Bob, are you ready?
I think.
Okay.
I don't have much, Ms. Mayor, I, we went to a couple of meetings with the elementary, at the elementary school regarding, you know, their, the shortfall or perceived shortfall, it sounds like it's coming together there. Uh, I just, I'm going to thank everybody for their condolences, and it's pretty cool. Thank you, and, and we're, the family's in a, we're in a tunnel, but we're going to be all right. And, uh, it's, it's just something that, and I was telling chief about it, something we're all going to go through, but it's, it's a trip when you go through it. So, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. Stacy?
Some of us attended the, the Lola meeting last night, they could speak on it, but it was a good meeting. You learned things from other, officials from other cities, and I enjoyed the district attorney just was blank, saying where we are, what's happening in the county, what he wants, and how he feels with certain things that have passed. And I appreciate that realness, because you know how he governs by his position. So that was really important. Um, and we'll, we'll hear some things soon of what has been, decisions have been made there. Um, I did meet with the, um, my monthly homeless call with the county, and not that we, we have a lot of things going on, but I will do one save the date since we have so many folks here. It is for, um, I think Tim got some housing information too, from the mayor of Wa- Wa Rika. But this is just a flyer, I'm not sure if we'll post it here, but it's speaking of an event that's for a community meeting. It's for housing needs and issues. It's Wednesday, April 27th, 6:00 PM to 7:30, and you can sign online, it's a Zoom meeting, so I'll put the, I'll give it to our, our, I'll say the church clerk, our city clerk, and they can have it available here. But it's talking about housing elements with regard to, number one, meeting need, housing needs and issues. So as you know, Wa Rika is doing a big effort by building a location there that's going to hopefully start soon, and that, as I said, doesn't affect just them, it affects everyone in the county, because we will send people there, because we don't have a listening ear. That's something to look at. But that's, again, Wednesday, April 27th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and I'll, I'll give that to our clerk, so she can have that available, or on our website, or however they want to post it. But it should be something good, and you can call in from your home, you come from your home. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Sue?
Um, I do. I got an email, I think we probably all got the email, there's a free dump day on April 16th. I believe that's a Saturday.
That's day after tomorrow.
Two days from now. Um, so, but check it before you start, don't load up any hazardous waste or anything. Check, check online before you start taking stuff down there, even though it's free dump day. Um, and then, I wanted to say, I got it, I got an email from a gentleman in town that talked about the South Weed trash, and I belong to the Weed Rotary Club, and the Weed Rotary Club three different times has gone down to clean up the trash in South Weed. Um, and we usually spend about three hours out there picking up garbage and have about 15 or 20 bags of garbage while we're out there. Um, and we will, we will, oh, since all these people are here, we will have another one of those days when we go out there, and any of you are more than welcome to come help us. We supply the little grabbers, we supply gloves, we supply garbage bags courtesy of Solano's, thank you very much, Solano's, and we try to get as much of that cleaned up. And I read something one day that I, that I actually wrote it down, um, and if all of us could follow this, it could help, although South Weed's huge. It's not my trash, but it is my town. So even if we're, you know, no matter what we're doing, where we are, it, there's, all of us can do something to help our community to not look like it sometimes ends up looking like down there. So, that's it.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a comment of that. That's not, I would say, not just South Weed. That's downtown. If you're walking, walking downtown, you see a piece of paper on the ground?
Pick it up.
I pick it up. That's what we all should do, and if we, if, that, that's something that we can pass on to the young people. But you got to lead by example, so, see something? Pick it up, throw in the trash. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, over last weekend was the first outing since COVID that has happened in our town, and it was a very, the chamber did a very nice job with Chinese auction, and more events will be coming shortly next week. And I just, I just want to say, um, ahead of time, I, if I seem a little distracted, uh, my 90-year-old dad is in the ER right now, so I, I am getting text messages on what's going on, so just bear with me. Thank you.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Uh, I, I did forget one announcement. Uh, I am sorry about your folks. On Saturday, the 23rd, uh, there's the 7th Annual Kids' Day Festival, and approximately 400 to 600 kids will be at the Bel Air Park, enjoying activities, games, and information for parents to pick up on how to make their families safer, how to make their family lives a little easier. So, everybody's welcome, stop on by.
Okay, so if, I, I didn't catch all that, but if you, if you didn't understand it, it's Kids' Day next Saturday, Bel Air Park.
What, what time again? Ken, what time?
Am I speaking to the...
To. All right. Presentation from First Five. Hi, Steve.
So I'm here representing First Five Siskiess and the Siskiess Community Resource Collaborative, which includes the Family and Community Resource Center of Weed. And April is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, as well as Sexual Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation for the City of Weed, um, which I assume that you've adopted or will adopt. Is that correct? Okay. I've been asked to go ahead and read this, and first of all, I wanted to say, I'm sorry about your dad.
Thank you.
Richard told me earlier, so we'll pull him for him. Um, so the proclamation is April 2022, the Siskiess Child Abuse Prevention Council Collaborative Proclamation. Whereas children are vital to Siskiess County's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, whereas all children deserve to live in a safe, stable, nurturing home and communities, whereas families, educators, and community members are key to foster children's healthy growth and development, whereas research has shown the enormous impact that positive parenting practices can have on a child's social, emotional, and intellectual development, whereas the purpose of the Week of the Young Child, which was April 20th, the week of April 2nd, is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs with a celebration of early learning, young children, their teachers, families, and communities. Whereas child abuse and neglect prevention is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in, of a community. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our society as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 57 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas sexual assault impacts children, adults, and the community at large. Whereas effective child abuse and sexual assault prevention succeed because of partnerships among citizens, agencies, school, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement, and the business community. Whereas communities that understand the importance of prevention and support for the well-being of citizens thrive and prosper. Whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing child abuse and sexual violence in Siskiess County. Therefore, we hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening families in the communities in which we live. So, thank you all. Um, you might have seen signs and pinwheels going up around different communities and areas throughout Weed and other Siskiess County communities, um, that's all bringing awareness. And I also brought pens, that I was hoping that all of you with the city and anybody who else is interested could come by the Resource Center and get some. Also wanted to provide you with some brochures. Brochures on family community resource centers and how a lot of our programs combat child abuse and strengthen families and communities and create a stronger bond within your, within families for children. And then there's a flyer in there also for Kids' Day Festival, which we briefly talked about. So next Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, there'll be magic shows, balloon tying, bounce houses, free food and beverages, numerous county partners and outside the county coming in to do fun activities with children and families, including animals and other, other great things. So we haven't done one in a couple of years, so we're looking forward to it. In the past, we've gotten, like Ken said, 400 to 600 children and families, so we don't know what to expect this year. It's either going to be the same, or it could be 10 times better, because we haven't done anything in a while. So, thank you, Kim, for the Parks and Rec contribution and letting us take over Bel Air Park for the weekend. Thank you to the City of Weed for letting me come and do this proclamation on child abuse prevention and sexual abuse awareness. If you have any questions or...
Do you, you have a contingency plan for bad weather?
Yes, so a backup will be the following Saturday, April 30th. Luckily, we did not plan it for this Saturday, so that's working out in our favor. Hopefully, I haven't looked forward to the weather forecast for next weekend yet, but typically this time of year, you never know what's going to happen.
Anytime of year, year.
Well, yeah, Siskiess County weather, right?
Right.
You wait 15 minutes and the weather will change.
It will.
So I appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent.
I'm, I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Oh, on, on consent agenda? Okay. Do we have any public comment on any items on the consent agenda? And anybody on Zoom that wants to comment? Jeremy? Nope? Okay. She moved, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you, oh, that's right. Gosh. I'm a little distracted, I told you.
Seconded, so Stacy Green?
Aye.
Kim Green?
Aye.
Bob Hall?
Aye.
Ken Palfini?
Aye.
Susan Tabalero?
Aye.
So, so just for a little background, because he's on Zoom, we have to do a roll call vote on all of our stuff tonight. Okay. We have not removed anything from the consent agenda, so moving on to regular business, and first up will be H, the, uh, discussion of requests from residents, as well as parents and students from Weed Union High School to initiate reorganization of Siskiess Union High School District to Weed Union High School and the territory it serves, are instead included within Weed Union Elementary School District.
Where do we start?
So, we, we can take as many comments as we have people that want to comment, but you will be limited to three minutes each, and please try to not repeat what, what has already been said. All right, so anybody can start. Name and address.
He's good. All right, there you go.
Hi, John Ray, head coach, Yankees T-ball. Superintendent principal, Weed Elementary School, 575 White Avenue. We have had these discussions before, but I wanted to give you an update on behalf of Weed Union Elementary School District. So our Board of Education has actually passed a resolution that can give a clear and defining area of where the Board of Education and we as Weed Union Elementary School District stand on this particular issue. And to put it in, summarize it, it's basically that Weed Union absolutely supports any type of study to look at, is there a better way of doing business, or are we doing it the most efficient way we can? So we would not only support, but we would fully cooperate and participate in this particular study, and would look forward to the results. We also understand that the city council does not have the power to reorganize districts, but you do have the authority to order a study to look at the process that is involved there. So I wanted to give you an official update on behalf of Weed Elementary School, and I believe Mr. Hall might have given you a copy of that particular resolution, as well as it's on our website under our agenda.
We do have one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Veronica Rivera, 743 Shasta Avenue. I am in support of this study. I think, uh, I went to a board meeting with the school, and I believe the only vote left to move forward with the study was the city council, and I had, I thought that was a no-brainer, and I, I feel like any other vote to not move this forward is almost like a personal agenda, and it's just for a study. That's all we want. That's all that we are asking for, is to move forward with the study. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kevin Charter, 3835 Columbine. Good to see you all again. Last time we spoke, you asked us to come back if we had some more interest in the community, and I hope you see that we do have a greater interest in the community to express our views tonight. Um, I just want to summarize a couple of things for those that may not be aware. We are just asking for that study. That's all we want to know. And, uh, look at the feasibility of merging Weed Elementary with Weed High School. Uh, I think there are a lot of pros and cons, but again, that study is, should illuminate that for all of us, and there's a, certainly a process, a multiple public meeting process where the community would, would come. Uh, it is in the purview of the County Office of Education. It is one of their tasks when directed, and then we would definitely support you in that endeavor to direct the county to do so. Just from a historical perspective, Siskiess County Unified District comprised all schools at one point in time, and over many, many decades, schools pulled out and created their own independent district. And I think it's time for us at Weed here to just have a hard look at that and find out, again, is this the best interest of the students? Personally, um, the process is very long. My last remaining student home would not be a benefactor of having a unified district, but I fully support that. I'm looking more at the sixth, seventh, eighth graders that are at Weed Elementary today. Um, and one of the things that, that kind of, I felt like got a little muddy last time, something even like Butteville. Butteville is its own independent school district. And we are talking about the feasibility of simply pulling Weed High School out of Siskiess Union High School District. That's it. Um, and if the study comes back that it is a positive decision, it is capable of doing that, then of course it'll go to the Weed voters to make that final decision. Perfectly understand that, want the, the community to understand that as well. You are not, uh, directed to do that, just a study. Uh, it seems pretty straightforward for us, and we would certainly like to do that. One of the biggest things that I think, though, that we've seen the last couple of years is the ability to, of one district, simple things, synchronizing calendars, if you have students in one school or the other, as simple as that may sound, it is extremely complicated. Um, synchronizing curriculum from the junior high school to the high school, but also funding. Um, some things that people may not understand, Weed students receive a certain amount of funding, and not all of that stays in Weed. Uh, that is into the district. And so having our one independent district will allow the money that Weed kids to get to stay in Weed, governed by a board comprised of Weed citizens for the community of Weed. Um, and we're excited about the opportunity, and we just asked the council to simply direct the county to conduct a study, and let's find out. Uh, we might find out it's not in the best interest of the students, and if it's not, then this is the best thing the way it is, and so be it. But thank you for your time.
Perfect timing.
Hello. My name is Spencer Hall. I live at 3116 China Mountain Road. Lived in Weed my entire life, and I just think that it would be incredibly beneficial for the entire community, let alone the high school, to have people from our community making decisions for the future of our community. The students coming up through Weed Elementary and Weed High School, just having support from their peers and people who have been there before, making decisions on their behalf as compared to a comp, or a group compiled of the rest of the county. Just having Weed community members making decisions for the children of Weed. That's all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Beverly Harlan, 1020 Kingston Road, apartment 3K, Mount Shasta. I've lived in Mount Shasta for 12 years. I'm a retired music teacher. I have two California Life teaching credentials in music education, one in elementary, one in secondary. So I'm a big advocate for children. I've loved to teach my whole life. Prior to moving to Shasta, uh, 11, 12 years ago, I taught music for eight years in the public schools in the San Francisco Bay Area, and for 14 years, I taught piano and violin students privately, just before I moved here. I support passing a resolution to have Siskiess County conduct a feasibility study regarding pulling Weed High School out of the current district and joining Weed Elementary. This will provide a number of benefits to students and keep the money that Weed students receive in the Weed schools. I feel that this is the best long-term course of action for the students, and I agree with the first four speakers also.
Thank you.
My name's Ron Hemmer, and, uh, I would like to say the decision that the council has to consider about the merging of the high school and grammar school is, should be very obvious what, what do people want, just like if you as a city council member had part of your budget taken from the city and went down to Wa Rika and let them decide what they were going to do with your money. You wouldn't like that. You would find it, they could not give a proper representation for the people up here. And same situation with the school district. The school district should have the money that's coming from the community, and having to merge would be most beneficial for not only the high school and the grammar school, but the families involved in both schools too. And you can see the value that would be presented in that way, and it wouldn't be so much of a political game like maybe it might be now. Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Benson. I live at 2121 College Avenue, and I have two young children that are standing in the hallway, and, uh, this idea that we're discussing right now will affect my children in the future, and so, uh, I just wanted to express my support for this idea of starting a study, and, uh, just like the other speakers before me, I think they've said more than I could possibly say, so I would just like to say that, that I would like to, uh, support the idea to do a study to remove, uh, the Weed High School from the Siskiess Union School District, if I said that correctly, and merge with, uh, the Weed Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Katie Benson. I live at 2121 College Avenue, as well.
Same time.
And I would agree with my husband, we have two young children, and I know they're just starting out, but it will affect their future in the end, so I just wanted to reiterate, yes, I support the movement to have the study done, to get the high school removed from the Siskiess County Union School District and joined with the elementary.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Lisa Hartwell, and I live at 1737 Davis Place Road, which puts me between Weed and Mount Shasta. And I come here a lot, so I care about our community, and while this idea of merging Weed with Weed for schools makes a lot of sense to me, I think really the first step is we need to find out, the study makes perfect sense, so let's go ahead and have that study. Thank you.
I didn't catch your name, did you?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jim Taylor. I live at 810 Hillside Drive. I really don't have any... I really don't have any axe to grind or anything like this. I have three children, went through the Weed Union Elementary School and High School and they're out of the area. So my grandkids won't be here either, but I think it behooves all of us to make this study, to find out what is best for our future. And our future is our children that's coming. So please consider, let's do this study. I think it's necessary. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Hill, 8024 Sugar Pine Road. I support the study. I think it's a good idea to evaluate what the options are and the study will help show us and help shape our decision. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Metz. I live in Mount Shasta.
Did you say Jerry?
Jerry.
Okay. Thank you.
G E R I. And I just wanted to add my short comment in support of the feasibility study. It just makes so much sense since there is an issue and people are wondering, why not go ahead and have the study and see what comes out of it? And just my own personal opinion is that at this particular moment in our history, local control is very valuable.
Good evening. Mike Matheson, Superintendent, Siskiyou Union High School District, 17133 Casper Road, Weed. Here we go again. This is a, last time I was here, I gave you a summary of the process and a diagram of the process. If you go back and take a look at that process of the study and the steps that the study goes through, you'll notice that once the study is completed, it doesn't come back to the community of Weed for a decision until it goes to the state and then comes back here for a political vote. As other communities have found out, that this is a divisive, time-consuming process at a time when we need to be pulling together in support of our students across our district and all districts in our county. Isolationism has never been a good practice in history. The Siskiyou Union High School District has representatives from four different communities that support the educational, high school educational process of those communities. Those representatives coming from each of those communities, including Weed, have benefited all the students in our high school. Having multiple perspectives come together, especially in an educational environment, brings value, diversity of thinking that is so necessary in our world today. And that diversity of thinking starts at the top and works its way through our school system. And in that, our students graduate from here and go elsewhere and have to live and understand how to deal with diversity of thinking. I hope we want our students educated from a variety of viewpoints. That's so important. So please, let's put this to rest, at least here. And I'll remind you that close to 50% of the students and families that are in the Weed Elementary and Weed High School attendance area do not live within the city limits of Weed. And that there is a process. And three months ago, we talked about that process. And obviously, if the folks are back here, they've struggled with that petition process, which only requires 10% of the voting population of that attendance area. So why don't, if there's truly a desire, truly a need, let's have it come from those, all of those people, voting people of that representative area. Thank you.
Good evening. Sheila Price, 407 East Lake Street, here in Weed. I have to respectfully disagree with Mr. Matheson. I think our community already is very inclusive. It's very diverse already. I don't think that we necessarily need someone from some other community to tell us how to be inclusive. Or to formulate the ideas of our students, of our children, on ideas of inclusivity. And I definitely support the study. I think we need to know what our options are. It doesn't mean that we have to go down any further path than that. We just need to know what the information is so that we can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janav Levens and I am the Siskiyou Union High School District, Area One, Weed Board Representative. I'm your Weed, one of your Weed Board Representatives. My husband Joe and I came from a small community over on the other side of the mountain called Big Valley. And we were a K-12 district there. And we were very excited about moving to Mount Shasta and coming back home after our children grew up. And we thought it would be better when we came over here. But to our surprise, it wasn't better. It was probably better where we came from. And I don't have time to tell you all the reasons, but that is what we found. So in case you don't know, the makeup of the board of Siskiyou Union High School District, I'll just quickly review it. Happy Camp has one vote, one person. McLeod, one person, one vote. Weed, two people, two votes. And Mount Shasta has three people, three votes. And I'm really not here for myself so much as I'm here to represent the people that I represent. And this is what they would have me say. I'm here to represent my constituents and report to you on the frustration they feel with the current board situation. They are extremely frustrated and report that they don't feel like they are heard by the board. They come to the meetings politely and respectfully, voice their concerns time and time again, but feel that their concerns fall on deaf ears. They email board members and administrators with concerns and questions, but receive no reply. They feel the board votes lockstep with whatever the superintendent recommends and never vary from that, no matter what their constituents' concerns or input are. They feel that the board doesn't make decisions that are in the best interest of their community, but what is in the best interest of themselves, so as to maintain a compliant group that is always ultimately in agreement with the superintendent. In other words, there is no diversity of thought. There is very little turnover on the board, some staying 20 years or longer. I might be off a few years on that. My constituents feel this has created somewhat of a closed club. They feel that vacancies that have been filled on the board in the last couple of years have been extremely unfair in the eye of the observer, with less qualified candidates being chosen over perceived more highly qualified candidates. They are extremely frustrated and feel that their only choice at this point is to vote with their feet. Please give them local control and let this study go forward. Thank you.
I would like to use the last, maybe a minute or less to, I had time left over, just a few statements I'd like to make. Okay. The education, I'm a product of the public schools. I graduated before we had the national level of Department of Education. Since then, the education system's gone down to hell. We're less than what we were in the world standing. I've had kids that wanted jobs working for me. They couldn't even figure out how the address worked in the city. And to having the school system ran by bureaucrats from the top down is the worst thing possible. Because with the public school or with the initiation that the community wants here with the high school and grammar school is to control the education that our children will be getting and having a stronger influence over it. The way it's working right now, it doesn't prove itself to be very good. Mount Shasta High School says it's above average. It says it has, 30% of the students have arithmetic or mathematical skills. They know how to use a pocket calculator. 50% know how to read. They know how to read a paper, got a third grade education. And that's the product of the government school, which we have today rather than a public school that the local community governs. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Comzy Bowles, 138 Chaparral Drive, here in Weed. So I do want to just say that I am in support of this feasibility study. And it's mostly, it's for the children, for the children of our community. And I think it's important that we are governed by people in our community. This, in my opinion, I don't think it's going to segregate the children any further. In fact, I think that as a community, it'll make us a little bit more whole. Another thing is, in different situations, I think it also could potentially give families an opportunity to decide what school district you might want to send your child to. So maybe, maybe we have two separate districts and they prefer one over the other. I mean, we see often when children have the ability to either go to schools here in Weed or Mount Shasta versus Wyrika, we are seeing that we are losing children and they are heading to Wyrika. So I think giving some options for some kids that are a little bit more local, whether they want to go to Mount Shasta or Weed, could be a great benefit to our community.
Hi, Juliet Charter, 3835 Columbine Road in Weed. I'll keep this very brief. I am in support of the feasibility study. So I'm sitting here listening to everyone. I do find it interesting that we have two superintendents on opposite sides of the fence. And I think that that should be a consideration moving forward with the study. Thank you.
Looks like we got one more.
Hello, Sarah Weisner, 430 Belair Avenue. I'm here in support of the, going forward with the study. I'm a parent of a eighth grader at Sisson. And I have a four-year-old that'll be in TK in Weed, excuse me, this coming year. I think the differences of Weed Elementary and Sisson and the high school was huge during the pandemic with how long they were in distance learning. I think it's very important that we keep it at a local level with Weed being able to make those decisions for Weed students.
Any, no Zoom comment? Okay. Then that concludes our comment section.
Ms. Mayor, I have some emails. Do you think we need to read them? Did we all get them?
We all got them. We all got them.
We all got the emails.
David?
Everything that I?
You're not required to read those as long as we make them available. They are public records.
Well, I have, I think, excuse me. I believe I have 11 of them, 11 of them with people from city limits and people from Shastina and people that are in Shastina that grew up in Weed. But should I read? Are we not required to?
No, you're not required to read those. But they are public records and should be available.
Let's put it this way then. I'm going to try to get through this thing. Obviously, there's, the community wants the study. And what this, there's not a debate. It's about how we're going to get the study done. Is the, is the elementary school going to have the money to do the study themselves? I doubt it. I, if, is the, to get to 10%, and this is where I might get lost, to get to 10%, I don't think it's that difficult. But what's, in our community right now, there's only a handful of us doing things. Everybody else is busy in their own lives. And as I address the board here, you guys know what I'm talking about. And there's a time and place to, to lead. And the community's, the easiest way to do this, I mean, because if we want it, the easiest way to do it is for the city to ask for the study. But I understand. Now, what we're getting, what we get into there is, is just basically, back to I said, there's only a handful of us. And I think the community's asking us to lead. And I think it's, you know, this isn't something that's done very often and this is why other communities have failed, because it's a difficult task. And we, it's real important to understand, you know, to weigh it out and it's going to take a study to do that. And we have opposing views, but we also have opposing positions, motives. My motive may be just for the children, you know, but if I happen to have a job that's dependent on this, my motive might change. And my point is, as we, the community's asking us to lead. And I know it's hard and I know that something's not, you know, I tried to get this onto the council, on the agenda as an action item. And I was basically discouraged to do that, which it didn't work out. I thought we were on the council. I told everybody, I mean, on the agenda, I told everybody we were. I made a call on, I think it's Friday, we weren't even on the agenda. And then it got changed. I don't know. And I'm probably, I'm going to get lost here and walk off a cliff probably. But my point is, is that it's time to lead. And if the job, if it needs to be done, we need to do it. We all agree that it needs to be done, how we do this. And I think it's, it is out of the ordinary, but I also think our community is out of the ordinary. You've heard me talk before regarding the culture, our culture. This is an opportunity to start developing a culture. But my observation is we don't work a culture right now. Probably some of you heard my spiel before that growing up in this area, I mean, there was all kinds of things, everything, Boy Scouts to whatever, there was things happening all the time. Those things don't happen anymore. Even church. Doesn't happen like it used to. That's how the culture is developed in a community. And this is an opportunity to start discussing education and the potential of it. It's here, the potential. It's just a matter, can we get together and actually work together in, when it comes to the school system? If our kids are, if our test scores are dismal, like they are now, somebody should pay for that. Somebody's feet should be held to the ground. Who the hell is doing this? What's happening to our, to our education? What's happening to our, to our education system? Right now, nobody's responsible. It's not happening. But I really believe that if we pull this into our community, that there will be members that take, and it'd be a serious job, being on the school board. It's not going to be, you know, rubber stamp things and with the old thing, I can't do anything about it, it's the county. No, it's going to be on that person to make that decision, those people. And so I'm definitely in favor, and I ask my fellow members to lead in this, on this item here. And I think it's obvious that, that it's needed. And thank you for your time. No cliff? Oh. One other thing, Ms. Mayor, one other thing, I'm sorry. We don't do that, you don't clap. Thank you. The other thing is that my mother-in-law went to, through the system in the 30s and 40s. And my wife went through this system while I was in McLeod, going through the system through the 50s and 60s. My kids went through this system through the 70s and 80s. My grandkids went through this system to, they graduated three or four years ago. My great-grandson is in the system right now. So I do care, I do have something in the game here. And we all do. And when we start talking about generations, this is serious stuff, guys. And I want to tell you, I'm going to end with this, is that I think that this, I've been on the council now for 14 years. As far as our community, this, to me, is the most important thing to come across. And I was the mayor during the fire, serious times. This is serious. This is not a pissing match, who's going to do it? This is serious stuff for our community. And it's a time, it's an opportunity for us. It's an opportunity to actually, can we do it? If not, we'll just say, oh, we are what we are. But we could come together. It can be done. But you got to believe, you got to start someplace. And it started with leadership. Thank you.
You want me to go?
Do you, would you like to speak again?
I'll speak.
Go ahead.
Your approach is opposite, but there are chances of us winning.
The superintendent of the high school, he wants to do the method of 10% voting, which is customary, to get approval from a good sampling of the voters. So you're not questioning yourself, did we do the right thing? The other side is, it's just let's go gangbusters and go do it. I don't believe bottom up is the way to govern. Bottom up is chaos. I believe that top-down is order. Is it cumbersome? Indeed it is. If you just sit on the city council long enough, you, that's one of the first lessons you will learn. But I do believe the longer process is also the way to get the public better informed. One of the factors is there's not enough board members going to the high school or to the elementary school. I don't believe that is for people just wanting to hang on necessarily. It's also from people just have, can be, from people just not caring enough to be part of the organization that, that changes. I believe that decisions on a group are better than a small section of a community. Small sections are divisive. You can go, it's kind of like looking on Facebook, if you want to hang with all, all people with a certain particular attitude, Facebook can lead you to those directions. If you want to be more global in your approach, then you probably, Facebook's actually probably a primary source of news. I believe the best interest of the district are advantaged, are having advantages to possibly the weed and Mount Shasta. I'm not sure which, but I believe that's what the study would show us. So I do agree that a study is necessary. But I also believe there's a lot of people out in this community who want to do a shortcut to the work. And although Bob and I probably differ on, on that approach, I believe the public has to be willing to do the work. We're also looking at an elementary school, I only attend to one board meeting. They seem to be, have some financial issues at the elementary school. I'm not speaking to the final result of those financial troubles, because I haven't heard of them yet. But there's no way that you can have an organization that is dysfunctional try to grab a hold of another organization that for the time being is fully functional. So again, I would still probably, for me, I would lean towards letting the process go, giving it out to the voters, the voters decide. Keep the city of Weed, in the city of Weed's business, and let the high school and the elementary schools take care of their business. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Palafini, Ken, you're talking about governing from the top down rather than the bottom up. Are you regard, is that, you're saying that the voter is the top? And the bottom would be what?
The voter selects those people that are on the top to make those decisions. My bottom up, for me, is having everybody who does an employee there run the system. I don't believe you'd get a good result with that approach either. To me, that's too chaotic. You'd have to kind of keep rearranging everything, but the top-down is a better method. It's cumbersome, but it is a better method. It's something we utilize, and the United States has been very successful with it over the years. So...
So you're, you're saying that if, if, if the study, if this study isn't done, and it never comes to fruition, and things continue the way they are, that's just too bad? Is that what, that's the way it is?
Well, no. I would say it's up to people to replace the school board members. Now, short of that, I don't know how to help people unless you're willing to help yourself a little bit. This has kind of been a sing-song, song of our community for a number of years now. And another issue on, on the agenda tonight speaks to the same thing. It's a matter of what are you responsible for? Are you handling your organization? Is your organization dysfunctional? And if it is dysfunctional, what are you going to do about it? So voting is, is what we need here. That's technically, I, I know, and everybody knows what I'm referring to.
Ken? Ken, move your arm, your hands from in front of your face, because it's hard for us to understand you, and then, then we can't see your lips moving.
Okay. So you want me to start again? So technically, I believe your organization needs to be strong. You need, if you're not getting results with your board, then you need to replace the board. If you're not getting results with your city, you replace the city, the city council. So it's just no different than anywhere else. All the cogs in the wheel have to have to turn. If you have a broken wheel or a broken cog, something's going to foul up someone. And I think with our, our school system, if we are, I don't want to look for somebody to blame, I want to find the problem. It can't be just one or two people, it has to be more systemic than that. So whatever it is in the city of Weed, or at the high schools, actually, I don't really know, because I haven't really delved into that issue, but the board member should be.
Well, Ken, I have to, you know, agree with you that, you know, they should be.
I am with my turn.
But it's not, it, we're talking about it should be. I mean, we were going to have town hall meetings regarding this, we haven't done anything with that. And I think it would, you know, it just, because we haven't done, the reason we haven't done it, because we haven't had the time. I haven't had the time to do it. It's not being done. And I...
I would say that it's not our issue to have done. I believe that when we left the last meeting, the school boards were to contact each other and have some conversations. I would like to know, how many of those conversations did they have? It doesn't appear many, if any. So that's what I get from this meeting, because it doesn't seem like the, nobody's turned the page to kind of figure things out. And I, and I do, I do agree with you, we need to be held accountable, but I believe there's a way to do that other than chaos.
That's what I'm saying. I think we need to leave, we haven't been, the leaders need to do that. And I respect you, Ken, I love you, you know that. And touche. I, I agree, I agree to disagree. Thanks.
Okay. I know that Stacy has some comments.
I have comments like every other person that's up here. My mic is on, I'm speaking loud, just a moment. I just have two questions. The cost of the study, do we know what that is? That was one of the questions that we had from the meeting, and I haven't heard that yet. And then the 11 emails, I didn't receive any, so I don't know who those 11 people were, so that's not correct, all of us received them. And my only other question is that, I do believe the statement with people working together regarding of what the personalities are, the positions, my bottom-line question, being here since I was three years old, is what's best for the students? So whatever can be that mechanism, that's what I'm supportive of. I'm done.
I think...
Thank you.
The study doesn't cost us anything, the city.
County, so...
Barbara, can I ask you some questions? Thank you. Is, is, is the, the study, oh, do you want to?
Do you want to come up to the mic so we can hear your answers? Thank you.
Could she introduce herself, or I can introduce her?
Either way.
This is Barbara Dillman, she's the former Siskiysburg superintendent of county schools.
Quite a while ago.
That's okay. Were you involved with Scott Valley? Or that was after you?
Yes. Scott Valley unified during...
You were involved in that?
During that. And... And they chose to do that. That was not something that was required of, of anyone. They chose to do that. They...
They just chose to dive in and do it, not have a study?
Nope. They didn't do a study. They did, they all got together and decided that it was in their best interest to form this coalition that they could work with. Yep. It went that way.
I get that. So there is, the county does have the capabilities to do a feasibility study?
Yes.
Would it take six months? Would it take a year? Would it take two years?
It depends on, I mean, it depends on how many schools are involved, and, you know, how many people are going to participate. You know, there's, there's a lot to it, but it can be done. Obviously, they did. So, and they, and they've been successful with it. So, yeah.
Was the county office involved back when Happy Camp had the discussion?
I was involved in that.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just curious if it went that far.
Yeah, I don't think that...
No, it never did. It never got to the county.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, so there is a capability up there, there's people that know how to do it.
If people, well, they, yeah, I mean, if you're seriously interested in doing something like this, then you start to talk to people who are interested with it to do it also. And if it works out, I mean, people, and it's still going to go to a vote.
To the communities.
Yes. The community that's involved is to vote. The rest of you do not.
Yes.
So, yes.
The community, that's obviously, it would be Weed and anything that feeds into Weed High School.
It can be done anyway. You could combine Mount Shasta and Weed if that's what they...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What you want to do.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. You can, you can do it any direction, it's just a matter of sitting down and saying, what's the best interest? One of the things that I always said, because I was the county superintendent, you know, it's always amazing to me to have these meetings, and you see people coming from all, all areas, right? And to think, we're bringing all these people in, this is almost a total waste of time. Because they'd come in and they'd sit and they'd, okay, everything's going good. But you, they weren't dealing with their own group to actually make a difference for their community. Because when you get together in a large group, you're talking kind of about everyone. But you're not dealt, you're not dealing with what you need to do. And that's when, when they did that in Scott Valley, that, that's what they did. They just sat down, brought their own group of people together. I thought it was pretty brilliant, because they were all working together. And I always thought it was interesting, because I'm trying to think, I can't remember exactly how many schools were there now, but every meeting we had, five people would come from there. Really? It was a small area. One could have come from there.
Yeah.
So it was just, it was a kind of a waste of energy and a waste of time. And they saw that, ran with it. The public loved it, because it got through. I was amazed at how well it was received by the public as far as supporting them.
Over there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I got a question. Barbara, the, if, if the vote, I mean, I'm going to get this out, be patient with me, please. If there is, it came to a vote, and we're talking about a district, we're, right here, we're locked into the city limits of Weed. This is what we're responsible for. And the actual school districts now is another line, did, another, now, if this was to come to the, to a vote, it wouldn't just be the city of Weed, correct?
No.
Correct.
Right. Doesn't have to be. You, it depends on who wants to join in and who doesn't, right? I mean, that's kind of the way it was. And, and it just happens to be, because of Scott Valley being smaller community, like I said, I always kept saying, it was interesting to me, they would come back to meetings and, you know, it was a waste of time. They were driving more than they were working with. And so when they got together and decided, no, let's, let's go for this direction, we want to pull away and make our own district, and they did it. And it was overwhelming for the community, the community loved it.
My point, question though, is, these, the other, the school district, we have designated boundaries for the school districts, correct? So, so this would, this would come to a vote, or let's say, if somebody was going to try to do the petition to 10%, getting a number, getting the number of people that are possible, we have to have 10% of everybody, everybody within, it's not the city any longer, it's the district, correct?
It's the district that chooses to get together, right? To make this happen.
That chooses to get together.
Yeah. They, they'd have to, uh-huh, they have to work together. That's why it worked for Scott Valley, because they decided, yeah, why are we sending, for every meeting that they have at the county office, five principals were coming over to talk about the same thing and then go back. So, once they got it into, we can... So once they got it into, we can decide what we want to do. And then we're going to tell the board what we're going to do. They still had representatives that came and worked with the other groups, other...
If you were going to get to 10%, you'd have to have a number to start with. So that 10%, of the district that you say that kind of floats, you can do it if you want to do it and you...
Well, the district, the Weed Elementary School District is larger than the city of Weed.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. But how do we get the, how do you get the number of...
Because they have, they have boundary lines.
It's a district, right?
Okay. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
10% of, it's not 10% of city limits. It's 10% of their districts.
Not ours.
Right. And that, it'd be a lot more simpler if we've had one district, which we don't. And that, it's pretty interesting when you start drawing boundaries with all the different entities.
Well, I think if you bring it to people's attention, they may think it'd be a great idea to pursue, like you're doing right now. You're having this discussion. You're opening up a new idea. Maybe it can work differently.
Does the county superintendent of schools office get paid any more money than if there was 26 school districts in the county? Or if there's five school districts? Does their money base change?
Boy, you're asking me a question. I don't think I have that answer. I, you know, it, it still has districts, right? And, and whether the districts want to get together and work together.
Because I know there's, I know the county gets money for special, special ed, for one thing. It comes into the county and then there's, they divide that up. Because there was kids at Weed Elementary School that lived all over South County that were in special ed there. The special ed was at Mount Shasta High School and not Weed High School or McLeod. I get that. So, so that money would still come in. Because there's, even if there was five districts, we don't even have enough students in the entire county to have individual, um, special ed, that kind of thing. I learned something, Mike, in eight years. So that, so the county would still have that.
The county, county just oversees and helps out with what you're doing. They're not there to judge as to whether, right? So you have the autonomy.
Probably wouldn't go away. The, the, this, oh, special ed programs that the county is in charge of.
Oh, yeah. Because the school district would take over whatever school.
If the school district's large enough.
Shows to do that. That's, that's right. That's kind of the, the...
Most likely.
Yeah. You've got to get, you've got to get grassroots movement that a change needs to happen.
Right.
And like I said, Scott Valley was very happy, so...
Okay. And I'm sure that they had some growing pains when they did it.
And I'm sure they didn't have 100% participation, right? I mean, that's almost never going to happen anyway.
Right.
Right.
It's, but it's in the best interest. What's the community really want? And, and actually, if you go to an election, that's when you really see it. Because they don't have to talk about it, but they can make that mark on whatever ballot they've got. And, and they voice their opinion.
So, so when you were there, nobody did have, nobody asked for a study to be done to unify some school districts?
No. No one asked for a study. I was just over in, because they, they would all come over to the county office and it would always wonder, why are you coming over here? It's a lot of money. You're bringing in how many people? You know, it's a lot of time. Didn't, and so we started talking about, just started talking about a, a small school district. You know, look at what, what can you put your school district to do? And that's kind of how it started. And Scott Valley ran with it and made it happen. And I don't think they've been sad since.
Okay.
One more question. The county, will the county have the number that we have to get 10% of, if we call?
Jim found that out.
Yeah. Last summer, when we were discussing this, I believe one of the superintendents brought forward the number. I was looking through my emails, trying to find it. But that's not the, I don't think the, the county school district has that. It's probably going to be the county election board. They're the ones that are, coordinate the elections. I wanted to say, I don't know if Mike or John has that number, but I wanted to say it was a couple hundred.
Yeah. I wanted to say it was like 320 or something that they needed signatures.
That many, but it was, because that would, that would mean there'd be over 3,000 voters just in that district. That's 10%. So I thought it was a couple hundred. But I, I was looking through my emails. I don't have that figure, Bob, right in front of me. So, but I, they, one of these gentlemen might know, but...
Okay.
It was under 300, is what we heard before.
Yeah.
That doesn't incorporate the attendance area, Bob's question, the attendance area of Weed High School. And we have...
Is he in, Mike?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. He said it was less than 300. Um, okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. All right.
Did you have something you needed to ask for?
No, but I see somebody else wants to make a comment.
I just want to clarify, just, I just want to remind the council, last summer, when we had this almost exact same conversation, Mr. Palfini had a good, great idea. Let's get the school boards together. Let's get these superintendents together and have this discussion. I just heard this again. We did that. And actually, Stacy actually attended it. Kermit Walters, Mr. Palfini didn't attend the meeting that he actually requested us to put together. But Kermit Walters came. Kermit Walters presented through Zoom. He presented over an hour-long presentation of this entire process. And Stacy asked a couple really good questions. We had over 25 community members there. Both boards were there. So this has been done. A lot of those questions were answered at that point in time. And Kermit went through this process very detailed with all of us. And it was for us to come back to ask the council, based on Mr. Palfini's request of meeting together, to then ask the council for a vote. So this is really, it honestly has all been done already. I don't see the value of doing it all over again. But you can certainly, I would talk to Mr. Walters up there at the county if you need it explained again. But Stacy, I know you had some great questions. You took a lot of good notes there. And, and thank you for attending that. But I just want to remind the council, we, we've done everything Mr. Palfini asked. Just again, we've done that already before. Thank you.
They haven't had any community meetings, have you? I mean, I mean, I, I don't understand. Okay. And I don't even know what that meeting was. But, oh, there you go. But I think there's been progress tonight.
It was a community meeting, yes.
Poor Jeremy.
I know. Please listen to all that. Okay.
Yeah, we did that. And then... It came here and it was on your agenda. And just for public who's here, who didn't see that, it didn't, there was a motion and it failed due to lack of second. And here we are again. And they still have the same option of going to that entire attendance area, the entire representation of both districts and getting 10% of the population to say, yes, we want the study done. And then the county will engage in that study process, which is an expensive, time-consuming process. So it's, and once that study takes place, it doesn't come back here to say, yes, we like it or not. It goes to the state. State looks at it. If it's approved at the state, then it comes back for the vote here. So there's steps. But once it starts, it's not in your control anymore until it gets back here.
The study? Why would we need control of the study?
I don't want control of the study.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Because what I hear people keep saying is, we just want the study. We just want to see the study.
Right, right.
Well, the study doesn't come back here for the community to decide and look at and say, is this good or bad for our community? It goes on to the state for that decision to be made. And then the, the state then says yea or nay. And then it comes here for a vote.
So nobody would get to see the study in the county?
No. We all see it, but it's not like at that point you can stop it. It's a freight train that starts going and doesn't finish until it does the damage. And you have this political process that takes place that if you pass it, didn't involve, as Mr. Palfini said, all of the voters that should be involved in that decision. And I'll, I'll just stop there.
Well, no, I, I get it. Though, Mike, there were, over half of the people that were here tonight were not from the city that, that spoke. Which we're used to that. Most of the time that people come speak here, they aren't from the city.
And/or Mount Shasta as well.
Yes, there were a few from Mount Shasta.
Quite a few from Lake Shastina, too.
They're, they're in the school districts. They're just not in our city limits. Yes. Okay. So this item tonight is still on our agenda as a discussion item, which means we are not taking any action, but we are taking the comments from tonight to decide whether this will be on our next month's agenda for action, correct?
Yes. You can direct staff with respect to this item to bring back something.
Oh.
Resolution.
A resolution.
A resolution, yes.
That's all that's required to initiate this process is a resolution adopted by a majority.
And then next month, we vote on the resolution. So I still have a month to think about it.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Because I'm still...
Unless you wanted a special meeting.
No.
I don't have time.
Oh.
Um, so I, I personally really, really wanted to see in the, the last three months, 150 signatures. But at the same time, I said, okay, well, we are here. I am here representing the constituents of the city of Weed. And, and to me, the city of Weed includes both the elementary school and the high school, which means that those districts, I feel like we do have some responsibility for. And so I said, okay, well, if they don't have the signatures, then I hope there's more than five people there and that there's actually more people to discuss this than at our last meeting when the place was standing room only to talk about feral cats. So, and I see that we filled some seats. And I personally have made my notes. And I, I know that there are some emails, which it does appear that we did not all get those emails.
I didn't get them, no.
If we could all get those, that...
He's to send them to me.
If you send those to Sandy, she will send them out to us. And then we will have time to read those emails. And then we cannot discuss this matter at any time with each other, except right here. So we are not taking this information and then going into the other room and deciding what we're going to vote. We will each have to take that information and decide for ourselves. And then we can, if we ask for it to be on the agenda for the following meeting, then that's when the resolution will come to the next meeting. And hopefully, with all of this information and that month, we will each be able to decide how we want to move forward. You can.
Okay. Somebody mentioned it earlier. Not all of you would know that I did sit on the Siski Union High School Board for eight years prior to being elected to the city council. I really get the calendar thing for all of you that are there. I really get the calendar thing. And, and I'm torn. And I've said this to everybody that I've talked to. I know that we're the easy way out. And I don't know that I, that I want to take that on to be the easy way out. So if we, obviously, it's not on the agenda to vote on tonight. So we'll, we can direct staff to do that. But I'd like some more emails of people against it or people who are for it. I'm, because again, I, I am 100% that I want the study, but I'm not 100% that we're the avenue to take it to. And if you have emails that you're going to send, please don't send them anonymously. Because if you're not going to attach your name to it, it's not, doesn't mean a lot to me. I did get, we got one today that was anonymous. And I, if I can't call you back and have a discussion with you, then I don't want to hear about it. So, yeah. I, that's, that's all I get. I'm, I've, I've been there. I've been where, Jana, I sat there with Jana for two years, or for four years, six years? Something like that. So I, so I understand that part. I'm on the fence.
I, I mean, can I just say one last thing and I apologize? I think, again, this is a good start for community conversation. That is, by all means, the best result here. I think this is what Bob wants. It's what everybody on this council wants. Is something that's similar to, potentially what took place in Scott Valley. That doesn't, that takes conversation. That takes conversation with your neighbor, with your, with your child's parents, or, I mean, with your child, with your child's friends' parents. But it all has to have discussion, at least at the dinner table somewhere, asking to talk about.
Three council members that are interested in, in having this come back. I think we've already prepared a resolution. We just bring it back with the resolution and agendaize it for possible action. Do we have three councilmen? I think we have Councilmember Hall.
Just come back to the room, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you for your direction.
Yeah. So the direction is to bring the resolution to the next council meeting for a vote.
And, and like Sue said, if there, if there's any other messages that you want to get to us, our emails are on the city website. We get them. Sandy, anything that she gets here at City Hall, she passes out to us. She puts it in our mailbox. But again, I, I'm kind of with Sue that if you didn't sign it, I, I don't really take it to heart. And so I want to know how you feel. And I, it's okay if you tell me who you are.
And they don't want us on the campus?
Yeah. They don't want, no, they don't want us. And so that's, that's it for tonight.
And, and for the public's notice, the next council meeting will be held on May the 12th at 5:30.
Yes. Our, our meetings are always the second Thursday of the month at 5:30. Okay.
It's, it's a pleasure working with this group of people. I'm telling you guys, there's something else.
We can do this.
You did it. You do it.
We're coming. And, and you're welcome to stay. If you want to talk about, if you want to hear about anything else. Exactly. Okay.
We're going to talk taxes.
Audit presentation. There he is.
We, we might want to give the public a few seconds to clear before Charlie tries to make his presentation.
Okay. Okay. So if you're going to discuss, can you please move out into the hall? Thank you.
It's audits, financial information. Oh, taxes are later on? Oh, okay. Who's doing that?
You have to take the taxes.
Yeah. Thanks. I've had enough. Thank God, tax season's almost over. Yeah. I'm doing double duty right now, so don't get much sleep. Okay. So we're ready? Ready to go? Okay. Well, thank you, city council, for allowing me to present. And I want to first start off by thanking the city staff, especially Anna. You know, she jumped into this thing not knowing anything, not even the program. she jumped into this thing not knowing anything, not even the program. And she, she was able to get me a lot of stuff and and it was great. And I also want to say to the council members and and the management that may not know, but Emily also helped out a lot. She was kind of doing double duty at the City of Wairika for a long time while I was doing the audit, especially at the beginning. So I want to thank Emily too, even though she's not here. But it was great. And even the the newbies in the city council, in the city hall office also did a great job getting me stuff. So just the, so, you know, I presented this to the finance audit committee. I don't know exactly what you guys called, but I I did present and we went over a lot of the details. So I just want to give some highlights to the council members and then open it for questions. It was a single audit this year. So a single audit is when you expend 750,000 or more in federal award funds. So the majority of those funds came from the Vista Drive Project, the EDA grant, and also the fiscal recovery funds. So it was a single audit. It was successful as far as no question cost. There were some, some findings that we had that it kind of actually relate to the findings that we've had over the last year or two. And I'll go over those a little bit. As far as the financial results, it was a good year. You know, 2021 was a terrible year. You know, we, I think we can all attest to that. It was tough with with all the restrictions and everything else going on. But the city rebounded quite well. You know, sales tax was up. You had the fiscal recovery funds, you know, COVID relief for the city was in approximately 365,000 for the year with a little, you know, with more coming this summer. So all in all, you know, it was a good year from a financial result standpoint. The net position, the financial position of the city improved, like on the governmental sides, side, the governmental fund side, which is not the water, sewer, and garbage. That's over here. All the other funds, including the general fund, that improved by 674,000 from the prior year. So really good there. Again, sales tax was up and you had some, the loan receivable payoffs, which was great. And and then the fiscal recovery funds. So and then on the enterprise fund, it was pretty good as well. You know, the water fund had a, had a surplus, was actually from a cash flow standpoint, was able to pay off $225,000 of the loan from the general fund because of all the water rights and all the stuff that's been going on over the last several years. So that, so that, so, you know, from a financial result standpoint, I think it was great, very good year. You will notice if you look at the, the financial statements, I'm not going to take you through every page or anything, but you will notice that there is an item on the revenue and expenditure page called extraordinary items. I just want to point that out. You will find the footnote, footnote number 14 that will explain all that to you. And it's pretty self explanatory. But sometimes when there's unusual and significant items that aren't from a year to year basis, then we, they, we separate those out. We call them extraordinary items. So there were some of that. And then we also did a few minor prior, prior, prior period adjustments to the prior year, mainly involving the solar project and splitting that out between the general fund and the sewer fund, which it was initially all recorded under the general fund. So anyways, I would like to just address the findings. You know, we, when you have a financial statement audit and also a single audit, then you sometimes have a finding that reads very similar because when you do a single audit, you're auditing auditing a major federal award and you're auditing that award only and you're auditing the compliance requirements and was the money spent on the project? Was it spent correctly? Was the reporting correct and all of this stuff? So you might have something that touches on both financial statement side and the single audit side. So finding number one and four are pretty much covering the same thing. And that has to do with the, you know, the, just the financial statement or the financial close and reporting process. We talked about this in the audit committee, but really, you know, the city, I think, needs to do a better job with the training of the finance director and making sure that person has all the tools necessary in order to prepare the books for audit. Okay. And do that finance, you know, during the year, you kind of do a soft close. At the end of the year, you got to do a hard close. You got to really get it ready. And Emily had every intention to do that. I mean, we actually did some training after last audit. I think we closed the audit last year, February, March, something like that.
Two of them.
Two, two of them, excuse me. And to, due to the concern of some citizens. I mean, they're basically paid hardly anything and they're doing it because the, it needs to be done. And right now, we don't have anybody stepping up. I don't see another generation ready to step in and carry, carry the, carry that. And I think it's very important to, you know, I, I plan on being buried there. And I think, you know, most of my family's being buried there. And I think it's very important. And we need to do something to establish a permanent funding for, for the cemetery. As far as the recreation, I, I want to see some, what, what would be done with the money. I, I still haven't seen that. But I'm also, I'm with the people in Wairika. I think we need to be talking about a half a percent. And I say that because I believe we need to, we need something right now for our road. We don't have our road funds. We don't have road funds. And it, we're going to need some wonderful grants to come our way to maintain our, our roads in the future. That's one thing. But there's also the, another possibility that was kicked around at our, at the meeting regarding, we have to pay back the water fund. And I think it's hard for a layperson like myself to really understand, but I think I understand that we, we're going to pay this money back that we spent fighting for our water. And this would be a great way to, to knock that out without raising weight rates so high on our customers. Because here again, we're talking about a sales tax and we, we kick it around. 85% of the sales tax that we estimated comes from people passing through, passing through, using our roads. But we, we, so we, I, I think it's real important to, 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 to look at the, the big picture. Are we going to, you know, just take care of a couple of things here? Are we going to, you know, when it comes to road, roads now, we just don't have the funding, you know?
Bob, can I hang your, hang on to your thought for a second? So if we word this correctly, it's just going to go into the general fund and we really can do whatever we want to it. It's, it's, it's up to, it's my honesty, such as the last one where it said it would go to libraries and senior ser, senior services. It doesn't have to because it was a certain kind of tax, right? So we don't have to give it to the seniors. We don't have to give it to the libraries. That's at our discretion.
That's correct. If you propose a general tax, then it can be used for any general governmental service.
Which is what we're talking about for this, right?
Which requires a 50% plus one voter approval. If you were to propose a special tax, like it sounds like the one in Wairika would be dedicated to specific programs.
Right, yeah.
What did you say? Libraries and?
No, it was the pool and the fire department.
The pool and the fire department. If it says that, then that's going to, more likely than not be a special tax. It would require two thirds of voter approval.
And I'm, I'm sorry.
So we, so we can do this, right? I mean, we can.
Include roads.
Yeah, we can include roads. And if there's a, a year that the, the rec department doesn't need a new lawnmower or, you know, whatever, a new playground, then they don't get anything that year. It can go towards roads.
But the ballot materials have to say this is a general tax that can be used for anything.
Right. Yeah, okay. That's what.
That's where, that's where you come in.
That, yeah, that's.
Yes, the word.
Yeah, there's, as I mentioned last time, there's standard, there's a standard ordinance that the, that the state requires us to use.
I appreciate what you're saying, Sue, but I, I think that in reality is, is that money gets used, you know, and very rarely is there a extra, well, we're going to put this on roads this year. I think that, I think it's a time that we set aside something that, and I'm talking about not dipping up the quarter. I'm talking about a half, half a percent.
So, so just another bit of interest. So right now, Wairika is 775. So they're already at what we want to go to. And they're adding a half, which is going to make them 825.
And Bob?
It just sounds like a big number.
Well, it's.
If we get that, it's on us that we don't put it to the roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's on, I mean, because if we're doing the general, so it's going to go into the general fund, that's on us.
But if we need that money to, those funds to work with.
Right. Yeah. I don't know if I'm going to go for, I can go with a half, but.
Ken says that there is money in the fund now that we can do some other things with. So if that is the case, then having the additional quarter percent should also have some that we can use for other. All right, Mr. Balfany.
Yeah, I hate to shatter everybody's parade here, but I'm sorry. I had to, I gotta say that I will refer back to the school system, dysfunctional, disorganized, and I'm, I'm actually questioning some ethics here. This is bothering me a whole lot. The fact is, is it looks like a quick money grab, make everybody's little wish list come true. We're not Santa Claus. We're not here to collect a bunch of presents and then give them out. I, I just, if there's about, there's approximately 2,200 parcels, actually, there's 2,500 parcels as of 2019 in the we Recreation Department's district. Can you agree upon that? And if there's 25, so if I subtract 300 or so for not, or for government agencies, it doesn't work.
Ken, I, we can't understand you. Slow, slow down a little bit. No.
All right, let me start again then.
No, you don't have to start at the beginning, but you're getting very animated and then we, it gets muffled.
Okay, so I'll say unanimated.
Okay.
I believe, we are, we are not Santa Claus. Like, can't just communicate a wish list and, and raise a sales tax to make it come true. We have a responsibility to the city. We have a responsibility to public safety. We have a responsibility to public roadways. We have public responsibility to water, sewer, garbage. Those are the main functions of a city. We, we are really reaching here. Originally, when we did a new sale, we did the quarter percent sales tax. That wasn't, we, we did the quarter percent sales tax because we established fiber. Am I getting hot? Can't hear me again? Are you there?
Yes.
We did the library tax because we were already supporting the library and we needed a funding vehicle. We had decided several years before the tax that we were going to, we felt that the library was a, something that the city needed to contain. We then went, I passed that, we were talking with seniors and what the city might need seniors. Because at the time, Recreation Department did not have facilities at the time, which was shortly after and thereafter, but, but they also needed some programming. The rec department at the time did not have either the capability or the wherewithal to pull that off. I'm not sure where that fell apart. But what we did is we asked, we had a, actually, a little meeting with all the seniors. I think the Resource Center put it on, it costs us about 1,200 bucks. And we, and we passed out a survey and asked what the seniors wanted. So we established a needs list, established some costs, and, and they stuck to those costs. One of the other features that they wanted was transportation. So what we did is we went out and we got bits on a small transport, which has been very successful as well, at least in my eye. Now we want to add.
Because of the rec department?
On our Recreation Department, we want to add the cemetery. We want to add roadways. We want to add, I don't know, what else is on the wish list? I, I just don't feel, if you have a plan and you have a need and you establish those plans and, and you map it out, it's a little easier for, for somebody like me anyway to digest and say, okay, I can see where this would be necessary. For the rec department to say we're going to do programming, what have we been doing? Have, have we reached out to do any programming? With the whining cemetery, I got a letter here, it says they've been working for years on finding a funding vehicle. I don't know, I just looked at quick search, I found $20,000 for equipment, easily qualifiable. Has anybody utilized the methods available that are already in existence without raising sales tax? What's the next step we're going to do? Are we going to raise sales tax so we can build another ballpark or, or maybe pack billow come up there? Because I don't know. It's just, does not seem proper to me to keep raising taxes, even though we're not the ones paying the majority of it. It's just, where do we, where do we stop with that? I think if you guys, it sounds like I'm going to be outvoted, although I do feel that this should be a 3-0 vote because I do believe there's some conflicts. Because the only time we have discussed anything other than rec and cemetery is primarily at this juncture right here. However, I think you guys are, if you vote this through to put it on the ballot, one, there's no saying that it's going to pass. The last one failed with a 50-51. Is this going to be the same? And if it does, what are your plans? That's a big question that should be answered if something doesn't go your way. And I don't see those answers being taken care of either. So, so I guess I feel like I'm Mr. Grumpy at the Dr. Siswell. But I, I do think those are, they're valid questions. If we go back and do a property tax, and it is, it's, they're exposed. But it's an honest tax on where the rec department should get their money. 2,200 parcels, 20 dollars a parcel is $44,000 the last time I did the math. For me, I don't know what the needs are in the rec department. I know we'd all love to have a bundle. But it's not what we're given. It's what we, how we utilize it. I'll offer now, in my downtown zone.
We, we can't understand you now anyway. So are you, do you have anything else?
You can't understand.
No, we can't.
Now I can hear you again. All right, are you, are you finished?
Yeah.
All right.
May I give my thoughts?
Yes, please. Stacy?
My thoughts are on a couple of things that public has told me. Senior projects, the cemeteries, and specifically the Lincoln Heights. I know in the information we received, and I mentioned, it must have went over, didn't get connected with the brain for some people. But there was a process and a project that happened this past year and a half that updated the cemetery. And it's not mentioned into the documentation for the Wyndham side, but they told me they want to know that if anything else is done, they would like for the infested patch of dirt that's infected. They said they talked with Creighton, it's affecting the back of the cemetery. They would like that removed and then probably gravel, like the Wyndham Cemetery has it. So they just mentioned that. And so I, as a representative, I told them I would mention that. And so my piece is just for general tax, for the roads, the cemeteries, and senior programs. I'm cautious about the police and fire only because it, it seems like if something doesn't happen, we go to the general fund. And that's what people don't want. So I'm just sharing my thoughts and their thoughts. So do, do whatever you like. But, but that's my, my, my thoughts.
Okay, so the, the only way that that is going to get done, what they asked to be done, is if there's money to pay somebody to do it. And the gentlemen that are there right now, it won't pay them to do it.
The gentleman that are there are asking people to do functions in both the cemeteries right now. So they have been asked and they aren't paid. So that's a. They're asking people to do functions in both the cemeteries right now, so they have been asked and they aren't paid, so that's a fact.
They, they are paid.
The people who are doing it, Lincoln Heights cemetery are not being paid for the services they're doing.
They're volunteering, because, because it needs more work than what we can handle, is what I would guess. And I think the alternative is going to be, okay, it goes on the ballot and it doesn't pass. Then, uh, the cemetery will definitely be here every year asking for TOT taxes, and chances are the rec department will be too. Um, and then there was an, uh, I, I don't make the connection that if, if money from other people outside the community didn't pass by only eight votes, how would the people in the community pass something that they have to have two-thirds vote for? What's the possibility?
Property tax a two-third vote?
Yes.
That's not.
It's a, it, parcel tax. Yes. Okay, so.
I don't make a motion.
Any other door discussion? Okay. Oh, any?
Okay, we have to wait?
Oh, because we lost him again?
We're not going to vote.
No, we're just asking if there's any public comment or Zoom comment? No public comment? Anybody from the audience, public comment? Nope. Okay. So, can we, do we still have to, are we waiting for Ken to come back?
No, he's on, don't you worry, he's live on.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Gotcha.
Work for it. You have to, you know what, if it's a tough one to ask, you have to work for it. If it's worth it to your agency, you have to work for it. You can also adjust how you, um, what your business model is, because I, I'm not pretty to your business model, nor, I don't really do, I want to be. I have enough on my plate, but there's got to be something that can.
He, he is.
Improve the business model somehow. Can you guys hear me at all? Okay. Well, you, you missed my diatribe, so I will let you go with that one, but I believe we are, if we pass, keep passing sales taxes, we are going to be on a continuum. That is the answer for everything. It is not. The city does not work that way. The city has to pay payroll. This, it's not a guess that we have to pay payroll. If we come into the same position that a rec department or Wyngina Cemetery is, what happens to the city of weed? We're, we're, we can't get faced with financial crunches because we've overextended in different areas. The, the city, I believe money from a sales tax should go to the city. The city of Oryrica is putting a half a percent up there because they made a seven million dollar commitment to build a swimming pool, and they didn't do, they did the same, they have the same problem. They did not discuss, how do you fund that swimming pool? You can't build a monstrosity and just wish it were, you know, gold. It doesn't, it's not better. But again, we can continue to make a wish list on sales tax. I just don't think it's the course of business that we need to do it down. You do sales taxes because it's a necessity. I don't, if it, like I said before, if it fails, what are you going to do? If you go for a property tax and you work and you go sell that property tax because people should want the rec department, I don't know if it'll go through on the first try, but there's no guarantee that this will go through on the first try either. We did it the last time, and oh, you say it's only eight votes, what if it's forty-four votes? I mean, you, there's no guarantees in the voter population, I have to tell you, uh, so. Anyway, I, I just, again, I believe you're making a mistake by using sales tax as the backbone of districts. It's, it's, you have sales, you have property tax, that's where you need to go.
Okay, Ken, we get it.
Yeah, okay. I don't think so, but okay.
Well, we could say the same. Sue?
Do you have something to say?
Um, no, I was, Ken, I was going to say, oh, he stopped there. Um, he can still hear me? No, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I just don't, we're going to have to agree to disagree. So we can leave it at that. We're good.
All right.
So may we, may we have it put on, have a resolution for next month for a quarter cent sales tax? Are you watching me? Tell me, well, I know, tell me if I'm saying it wrong.
Oh.
Oh. Okay, uh, for general fund, emergency services, roads, cemetery, recreation. Is that general enough? Do, do you want three more things?
No, just say a general tax, and that's it. We don't need to talk about emergencies, cemeteries, which we don't provide cemetery services, the city doesn't provide those services.
Okay, if we don't have to say it, then I don't want to say it. So it's, so it's my conscience what I spend that money on.
It's the council's discretion what that council's, the money spent on.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, no, you just, we just need a direction, I think, so.
Oh, direction? Okay.
You need more than one of us to say?
About three, approximately.
Direction to bring it back to next month.
I'm okay, but I have different areas. I'm not for general fund as a whole, so.
Well, but that doesn't matter.
Let me speak, please. If that's a name, then, then that's, if it's not, then it's fine. I'm just not sure of the general fund. To be honest, openly. It was specific, the first time it was put on, that, I think it needs to be that way, that's what I'm saying, specific.
We can bring, we can bring one of each.
Yep.
They are ordinances.
If I'm three to one, I'm not voting, I don't care what that.
No, no, no.
But we would present two op, we could present two options.
We could present two different ones.
And obviously, the third option is the, is the no option on both of them.
Oh, right.
Right? And, uh, one could be a general tax and the other could be a special tax and we could fill in the blank as to what particular programs.
But if it, yes.
If we go, if I'm Stacy, we got to get sixty-six percent, right?
We have to get more votes.
Right.
Correct.
Wait, okay.
And, and this will be an ordinance. Normally, when you, when a city adopts a tax, it, that has to be approved by the voters, it can do that by resolution, but the state requires the city council to also approve the ordinance, meaning two readings, and whether it's a general tax or a special tax, two-thirds of the city council has to approve the ordinance that would impose the tax.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you. Moving on. Streets and roads. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. This is for the Lincoln Angel Valley, Union Angel Valley Road Project. The city has seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in funding. We had bids come in at eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, three eighteen, and would like to go ahead and award the bid to that and fund it with our own money until we can try and get it reimbursed toward the entire contract.
When you say our own money, you're just talking about the difference.
Yes, the hundred and sixty-one.
I'm sorry, hundred sixty-one. I'm in trouble here too, Mike. It's okay, yep.
All right.
I would like to make a motion that we choose option A to get the entire thing repaved. And when we do, we might need some stop signs on the road. That's not in the bid though, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Can we, we can't change that, can we? For what, let's present to what she mentions that.
Oh, no. Okay, I'm, I. Yeah, I would, I, I would like to move that we choose option A.
Do I have a second?
Is that, I'm sorry, that's for hundred percent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, are you looking at it on your?
I'm not looking at it directly.
Oh, okay. Yeah, option A is the tolls where it's. I'm sorry, it's the tolls and it's the eight fifty-four, three eighteen, and we will fund the rest of it. Option B is only half the road gets done.
I seconded your.
Option A?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment? Oh, go ahead.
Do we, do we have the hundred and sixty-one to carry? Is that, the hundred and sixty-one thousand?
You, you, I mean, we can make it happen, yes.
We can make it happen.
The answer is yes, we do have it. I, I've looked at it before.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and actually, Kim and I just in our meeting with the auditor saw it.
Saw it. Yes. Yes. Okay.
But our goal is also, like.
To get paid back.
Craig has said is to be reimbursed for that, because we're going to apply for some funding to get that reimbursed.
All right.
We'll get it.
Comment?
Zoom comments?
Oops, sorry.
No.
No Zoom comments? Roll call vote?
Stacy Green?
Kim Green?
Yes.
Bob Hall?
Yes.
Ken Palfeeney?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Susan Tabalero.
Yes.
All right. Motion carried. Fire Department.
So yearly rural fire capacity grant is what it's called now for the last two years. Uh, it's my recommendation as a fire chief that we, you guys allow me to write this grant. It's a fifty-fifty matching grant. Uh, up to twenty thousand dollars, we pay ten, CalFire matches with ten, and it's for equipment for the volunteer firefighters. If you don't allow me to do it, we have to buy the equipment anyway, so we might as well take advantage of it.
Yes, I'm, I make, I move that we, um, approve the matching grant with CalFire for the fire department.
I second it, excuse me.
Okay, Sue has moved, Stacy's seconded. Any questions? Public comment? Zoom comments? Roll call, Stacy Green?
Yes.
Kim Green? Here, I mean, yes. Bob Hall?
Still here.
Ken Palfeeney?
Hi, yes.
Susan Tabalero?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Transient occupancy tax. Consider approval for second quarter gap funding request by the Wade Chamber of Commerce. That's.
He doesn't.
I can talk loud though, you know me. Richard's out of town, so I came to represent the chamber this evening.
Okay, so, uh, there was the question regarding, is this money that is still sitting in the hopper from the last TOT allocations? Or is this money that will be go, we will be getting, uh, requests from, in July?
From our new fiscal year.
From the new fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I had proposed that question. Um, being the new president, I am trying to checks and balances and kind of maybe, kind of restructure some things. So I wanted to make sure that if this was TOT that we already had in this last fiscal year, and it's not TOT funds that are going to be in our report and asking for July, in July, June for July, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I was told that we still had about sixteen thousand that hadn't been used from this last fiscal year.
This specific request?
Yes.
This one is for the new. This is, this will show, this is, yeah, this is, this is the gap funding that's, that we did not allocate in December, so there's six months that you guys have not had any funding. So this is for, this will be, this will show that you were awarded this dollar amount when we go to award in, in June.
So upon that awarding, this amount will be deducted.
Q one and Q two will show that you were, I can't, I cannot say if it will be deducted, but it will show that you were awarded.
We are awarded this this time. As long as I have a clear understanding of that, thank you. And it's on the record.
Yes. Okay. Any other clarifications? Okay, any Zoom comments, Jeremy? Would somebody like to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we consider the approval for the appropriate, I'm not, what the mountain's not here, but for the mount asked for, for second quarter gap funding request by the Wade Chamber of Commerce.
There's two, there's two, there's a six thousand and a two thousand.
A total of eight thousand.
Okay, with that addition, please.
With the eight that one?
Total.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I have a question.
Questions?
So you still want this even though it's coming out of your?
If I could take two seconds to make a group phone call and come back and let you know the answer to that, I would greatly appreciate it if that's possible.
I don't have a problem with it.
I have, if I could. I, there, in part of that discussion, can you hear me okay? Because I've had a hard time to make, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The funding cycle is going from December to July of twenty twenty-three. That is the funding cycle. How much you spent will be subtracted out of that, but it, but you shouldn't see a huge swing. We can't guarantee that, of course, but I mean, so that's the conversation you were going to have. In other words, there's, there's money that we have collected that hasn't been dispersed because the council has not dispersed it yet. So December through March, March through June has been dispersed to you, but we, you're about the only folks that it's been dispersed to. Uh, a few others, but not too much.
Ken, I, I don't think that that's what their question is.
That's, that's okay.
That, but that, so, we haven't given out TOT money since November of twenty twenty, correct? Or twenty twenty-one?
No, that's not true.
Twenty twenty-one. So the question is, is the money that, of this, is this gap money from the total they got in twenty twenty-one? Or is it from the total they're going to ask for in twenty twenty-two, is her question? And it's been answered that it's from, that they don't have any more money from what they were allocated in twenty twenty-one. And it's the new money.
Well, we, yeah, we believe that they have requested and been funded for everything, um, for the previous year, but we can confirm that next week.
Okay. Does that, does that help?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, okay. I think either way, you need the money. Yeah. So if you want to stay open between now and June, I think you need the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Does she still want to ask the other people?
Do you?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll take responsibility. I'll take responsibility.
Okay.
Yeah, motion seconded.
And seconded. Okay, I'm sorry, public comment, Zoom comment, and roll call vote.
Stacy Green?
Yes.
Kim Green?
Yes.
Bob Hall?
Yes.
Ken Palfini?
Yes.
Did he fall, he looked like he fell over.
Susan.
Yes.
Susan Tabalero.
Yes.
All right, it's been unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm getting kind of squirrely here myself. Senior services. Oh, I turned it off instead of on. Consider approval of vendor request for senior lunches. Steve?
Oh.
If you have any comments.
You're all done, Liz.
You're done.
Oh, I'm the next one, too. I'm just holding the podium.
Oh, okay, well, he might come up with you then.
Come on, join me.
So the, the history of this is, senior lunches have been paying the caterers 850 per lunch. The caterers are saying they can no longer provide the type of lunch they've been providing for 850 per lunch due to rising costs of everything. So the request is $10 per lunch from the special tax money that we have now.
And just to be clear, this is only funding to support the meal itself, not staff or supplies or anything else. It's just to cover the cost of the meal.
Through the end of, through the end of June.
Through the end of June, and then a request for the amount that we were approved for next year to increase that from nine to 10 also.
Yep.
Oh, I thought we were just going to 10 right now.
Well. Well, yeah, 10 for the rest of this.
For the rest of this year. And then, and then we'll have another budget adjustment or request for the next fiscal year.
Got you. Okay, got you. Okay, got it.
I will make the motion to approve the funding request for the senior lunches. I think it's a great thing.
I second.
All right. Public comment? Zoom comment? Roll call vote.
Stacy Green?
Yes.
Kim Green?
Yes.
Bob Hall?
Yes.
Ken Palfini?
Oh, he left again. Okay.
He like literally just left and said, call me. He's going to the closed session.
Oh, oh, okay, so he's absent.
Okay.
Susan Tabalero?
Yes.
All right. It's approved.
Thank you. Seniors, thank you, too.
Yes.
Good job, Steve.
It is a great program. All right. Encroachment permit. Justin?
So request for an encroachment permit on Main Street from the south apron of the US Bank parking lot to Inez at Main, although it doesn't sound like they'll use all the way up to Inez, and also a waiver of the municipal code against open containers within the enclosed area for a private ABC license allowing a beer garden.
All right.
I do have a question. I'm sorry, I just thought about this. Staffing, are you going to have enough staff there to, to make sure it's safe? I don't know how to word that, but.
We, we plan on being able to cover it, yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the encroachment permit.
Ms. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the closure of Main Street, April 20th, from, April 20th, 2022, from 7:30 to 7:00 PM.
I would second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Public comment? Zoom comment? Roll call vote.
Stacy Green?
Yes.
Kim Green?
Yes.
Bob Hall?
Yes.
Susan Tabalero?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you. Staff reports. Who wants to go first? Sandy will. All right, Tim, that goes to you.
Well, I'd just like, again, you guys get all my updates on a weekly basis. We've got a lot, a lot of positive things going on within the city of Weed itself, and as I said, we've got our challenges coming up for this next fiscal year, but I think we've also got some tremendous opportunities, too, coming up as well. So other than that, I really don't have anything else. I'm with the rest of the staff. I'm just going to pass.
David?
Just a brief update on the sequel lawsuit related to the trucks, the Loves Truck Stop. We do have oral argument set, and that will be on Monday, April 25th, Sacramento, Third District Court of Appeal. It's going to be by Zoom, or Blue Jeans is the teleconference.
Okay, are we expected to attend? Do we?
No, you're not expected to.
David and I will be on the, on the Zoom.
Okay, wonderful. All right, Steve?
So, oh, and just, sorry, I didn't, I didn't finish. The court will have 90 days after oral argument to issue the decision. We should probably expect it a little earlier than that, but that's the timeline.
Okay. No report? Anna? Justin?
I just want to clarify on the dump day that it's not the city dump day, that it's the county dump day. So don't come, spread the word, don't come to the city yard with all of your items. And then I would also like to say it's National Telecommunicators Week, and I would like to give a big thanks to my support staff for the police department. They do a great job in this community. Just in the last week, week and a half, we've had several out-of-the-area family members reach out to us and thank us for our Yana program, the You Are Not Alone program. They do a great job every day, 24 hours a day, so.
That, that is a great program, and they deserve the praise.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, the dump day, where's that again?
The county dump.
The county dump there off Abrams Lake.
Mount House.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Per Craig, it's at both transfer stations, WaiRica and Black Butte.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Caltrans is helping fund that, listen.
Oh, nice.
What, what time does it start in the morning?
Sue's got it. The hours.
The hours.
Oh, hang on, I'll find it on here. I got it on.
All right. Wouldn't somebody like to make a motion to adjourn to a closed session?
Make a motion to adjourn this session to go to closed session.
I second.
All right. Good night.
Stacy Green?
Say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry to vote, yes.
Kim Green?
Yes.
Bob Hall?
Yes.
Susan Tabalero?
Yes.